I'd like to call the June 2nd, 2014 Finance Committee meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims?
I would move for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $180,286.65. Manual checks written in the amount of $488.18. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for May 16th, 2014, and May 22nd, 2014, in the amount of $424,835.53, for a total of $605,610.36.
Is there a second on that?
I second it.
All right, any questions on the bills this time?
I have none.
I have none.
And I have none. So all those in favor of the approval of claims say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Mr. Weaver, is there any other business for us?
We don't really have anything else, and we're late. We are going to have our adoption of the budget next week instead of tomorrow like we anticipated, but we had to get some things in the newspaper and advertise, and then, so we'll have a special meeting in the first part, and then we'll go right into the work session.
Tomorrow night, Your Honor. I know a lot of people are going to come for garbage collection. I have gotten, I was like standing in front of a chicken factory, feathers coming through my phone. So there are a lot of people who need to express their thoughts on where their garbage has been collected, and what the advantage is or disadvantage of changing that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, I didn't realize it would be such a hot topic.
Yeah, the mayor was mentioned on Chit Chat this morning that he'd had more phone calls related to this than any other thing that he's ever dealt with on the council, so.
I've had a few myself.
So I mentioned that it was economical to pick up garbage faster than it was a five-day schedule, and we, you know, and so they need, the public needs to hear that we did not change any schedule, that it was just handed to us and said, here, adapt.
Right, that's right, yeah. I mean, we didn't push this only because we were pushed by another organization.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think there's a couple of items that were brought up in relation to, they're concerned with the elderly having to take it out. Now, you have to realize 75% of our population are already on rollouts, so there's a lot of elderly that are already using that. The other alternative to that is we, we have 45-gallon containers too, which are half the size of a 90-gallon. I used to have those in Oregon. They are very easily manageable to move around. So that'd be, I guess, a suggestion for some of the elderly, because most likely they don't generate a lot of trash, so they don't need a 90-gallon. But, you know, that's something to look at. The other thing is, that we can look at, is still having pickups in the alley instead of having to have them in the front.
Yeah.
That's something we could look at neighborhood by neighborhood, depending on if, you know, your garage is face to the back and you need, that's where your access is going to be, it makes sense to pick up back there, and we can make that accommodations.
Well, the farther away from, if you look at design of homes, the older residential areas primarily have garages in back versus on the side or attached. If they're attached, then downhill is always nice with a garbage can, but when it's in back, it means a struggle through the snow to putting it in the front versus going to the alley. Now, when I said that my people didn't like it, it's, it's positioning of that dumper. When that dumper is farther away than the property boundaries, then, you know, it becomes a, not a pleasant tour. But there, on 16th East, from about Park to 7th Block, it's all alleyway, and there's no physical way to get a garbage can through, because all of their, you know, there's no doorways, there's no pathways to the front.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, and I just said, well, we will talk it out, please be there.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm sure there'll.
And I think that, you know, reasonably, if we said, you know, if, if you're currently getting a pickup in an alley, you know, your dumpster's currently picked up in an alley, then we will continue to pick up, but it will need to be a rollout, and I can't.
Yeah, it makes sense, and you should put them all on the same side, so when they come by, so they don't have to turn around and go down, pick up on both sides.
Well, the alley, you don't make U-turns in an alley. You collect one side.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, because everybody's used to taking their garbage out to a dumpster anyway, and so I think having a rollout that went to an alley would make a lot of sense.
Well, because when I lived on Adam Street, we had an alley, and it was actually, I found more inconvenient to go out to a dumpster, because I had to walk all the way through the backyard, go out the gate, walk down the alleyway and dump, and then sometimes those dumpster lids are not light, and so when I think of elderly people, sometimes I think that would be harder to do than having a little 45-gallon to move around.
I agree with you, actually, on that.
Yeah, it is.
And so that's more of an inconvenience than where you can have it right next to your door, and then all you have to do is haul it out to the back, but I, I know that some people are used to the same old way, and it's hard to change.
Well, I can't see any advantages, because I, I know what I'm doing now.
It'll make for, it'll make for good conversation tomorrow, I'm certain.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's all I had.
Right.
There's no other business, meeting adjourned.
I now call the June 3rd, 2014 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Guard lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Your Honor.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
It's Your Honor. Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kara Larson.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wartness.
And I am present. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Smith from tonight's meeting. Your Honor, I'd make the motion to excuse Councilman Smith.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum present this evening. This time we'll have the approval of the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd move to approve that agenda is presented.
Second. Then moved and seconded is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record, and if you'd speak into the microphone, so those at home can hear you. Right. Thank you, Betty.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Riverton City Council. I'm here to address you regarding your proposal to change the sanitation department from the large commercial units to the rollouts. I have conversed today with people who currently use the rollouts, and this is what they tell me, that during the winter, there is much breakage on those rollouts, and they didn't really know why. I believe the price quoted was 70 bucks apiece. If the wind is blowing, and they're not heavy, the wind will blow them over, and there's garbage all over. Same thing happens when they're empty, if they don't retrieve them, and the wind is blowing, they're, you know, they're empty, but they may find them down the block or two. The elderly are very concerned, because they have a fear of handling and moving these rollouts, and a fear of the weather conditions, and if we believe all the statistics that are around this, has become a community of elderly people, predominantly. There were two letters to the editor tonight in The Ranger. I hope that you will take time to read them. They were both in protest of making the change. You tell me that you have a tight budget this year, and I believe that to be true, because I have conversed with the mayor regarding the funds that are coming in this year, and they're pretty tight. So you're still going to have to have the big bins for your commercial, and, you know, why are we doing the change now? Is there a solid reason? Can this be postponed if we have a tight budget? Perhaps this isn't the time to pursue this. I, I don't know what stages you're at. The rural people, this isn't going to discourage them from bringing their trash to town and giving it to us. I think it will continue. They'll just make better use of the commercial bins at a different time. I believe we have an ordinance, and it wouldn't be too hard to, you know, if the employees that are running the operation really wanted to know who's dumping it, they'd just have to look through the trash. Probably it wouldn't take them a minute, but do we really want to prosecute for dumping trash? The other thing is, is that they'll either dump it in town, or they'll dump it all over the countryside. One thing that I feel real strongly about, I travel a lot, and I am always interested in city operations, and it appears to me that private enterprise does a pretty satisfactory job. Have any of you considered private, contacting private enterprise and seeing if this is a feasible way for Riverton's trash removal? You could eliminate the whole program if there were a private enterprise engaged. And one other thing I need to remind you of, with a tight budget, I don't know how many of you caught the article in the paper, the fire department is experiencing difficulty getting volunteers. We have a volunteer fire department in Riverton that does a super, super job, but if some of that responsibility should fall on the city in the next year or two, your tight budget, you're going to be at the bank borrowing money. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Is there anyone else? Yes, Judy.
I'm Judy Woolery, and I live on 16th Street. I live in the old section of town, which was specifically built and designed for alley dumpsters, not curb stops. 16th Street, you extended the road, cleared a Webwood Road for new development. In the old section, the road is narrow. People do not have somewhere else to park their vehicles, so the road is very narrow. Now, your conclusion for dumpsters is, I have a hard enough time getting a five-gallon container for your recycle program out to the curb to lift it. I'm not in good health, and there's a lot of people in my neighborhood that aren't, and I don't see where the city would save money. I really don't. You'll still have the trucks, you'll still have the repairs, you'll still use them. Now, our alleys between Mary Ann and the 16th Street through to 15th are very straight. Most of them are pretty well-kept. I can't see any reason, if you're going to have these dumpsters, if you can't just put them on the alley instead of on the front of the street, I can get a sack of garbage to the alley dumpster, but I cannot move the rollout out to the front of the street, and especially in the wintertime, when you do not maintain the road in the wintertime. It's ice, you don't plow it, you don't do anything with it. So I know a lot of people that are highly upset with your decision, and especially since you didn't ask for public input to start with. You just made a decision and said, this is the way it's going to be. Well, your newer sections of town were built with driveways into their garages, and friendly curbs, and a place to hide their garbage. The old section isn't, and I'm sorry. If you need money, raise the, wait, the garbage rate, but don't make us advertise our health trying to get it out there to you. I've been in the recycle program for three years now, and I have tried to do my part. So it's time the city done their part. If you want more money, get rid of your excess employees that it's overhead, and keep your service. Guys, they're the ones that make the money, that do the hard work. They're not the ones that sit in the fancy offices, drinking coffee and eating donuts. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
My name's Dave Leto, and I have the same concerns as these two ladies. I talked to all of you, Your Honor. I appreciate your talk on the phone, and all of you councilmember members that called back. I appreciate that. I have an elderly mom. You can see how many are here. My concerns are the same, and I understand that there's a mandate that, from this county, that we have to change the dumpsters. Well, that's fine, and I agree with this lady. The alleys were built as an easement for the purpose of trash pickup, sewer, water, irrigation. I suggest we keep, even if you go to the smaller dumpsters, keep them in the alley. I mean, you have to go up and down the street to pick up the garbage anyhow, and by the same token, some of the streets that you're going to impact are very, very narrow. Adam Street, Park Street is a very busy street. I suggest that we, if at all possible, do it in the alleys, and if the city has to have pads for it for those in the back, I, you know, take it out of the 1% tax fund. I mean, that's what it's for. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm Bob Woodward, and I've kind of got the same comments as these guys. I've talked to several of you, and got your ideas and my ideas, and like I said, the older section of town, and that's where most of our elderly live, and they, they have alleyways, and we ought to utilize those. Those dumpsters, a lot of people share those dumpsters with two, three, four houses. You know, the savings is going to come, you dump one dumpster, otherwise you're going to have, what, eight of those little rollouts there. These elderly people trying to get them to the street, trying to get them wherever, I think is, I think you need to listen to constituents, you know, it's just, I'm hearing a lot of comments, and I'm out and about quite a bit, so, you know, and I, I know that you guys are, you know, trying to work with the budget and doing the best you can, and it seems like every time I come in here, negative, I'm against everything, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully we're, you know, got the city going in the right direction, so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
I'm Donna Lanell, and I'm here to oppose the rollouts. They look ugly, they don't do anything to make the city look good, and Mr. Mayor, you're the one that is always talking about making Riverton pretty, and it could be, but it's not going to be with dumpsters lining the streets. And I, I wrote a letter to the editor, and I was hoping it would come out before tonight's paper, so more people would show up. But the elderly, and I'm getting up there, I'm 73, I don't know if I could roll a dumpster out to the alley either. And cost-wise, my understanding is, when they put the dumpster up and dump it, and then they bring it down, they more or less just drop it, and it cracks. So how, how much does it cost for these dumpsters if you have to replace them? And in the wintertime, they would crack more often, because they're cold. And in between time, how long would it take to get a new dumpster to me? And I'm lucky, I have Rumors Motel, and I can use my dumpster, but there's a lot of people that are going to have trouble with it, and I just wish you would reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Hello. My name is Sherry Jacobak, and I, like the others, are very opposed to the dumpsters. We have a nice alley system where there is already alleys. I don't see that putting dumpsters out on the streets and rollouts is the answer. And I have a question about the dumpsters. The article that I read in the paper said something about it would be quicker and less, you could drop maybe some employers, employees, to tighten up your budget and help with your finances and so forth. Well, I can't see where, in my alley, there are 14 houses that use four to five dumpsters, and you can't, and you said that the time limit would be less to dump the ones you are wanting to have, as opposed to the time it takes to do the ones in the alley. And I can't see you lifting and dumping 14 dumpsters as quick as you can for, period. And I, I agree with everyone here about the, the alleys are straight. There are areas of town that don't have alleys, they have to have pullouts, and so on. But the problem of people, some people that are lazy, they won't pull their dumpsters in and out, they'll leave them on the street. And I've been looking around town and driving and watching, and there are plenty that don't put their dumpsters back. They leave them in the street, and they stay there, and it's down on 6th Street is one of the places. So again, I am not in favor of your new system that you're talking about either.
Thank you, Sherry. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Yes, my name is Ed Maitner. I live over on 15th Street, and I basically agree with everyone, but I do have some questions that I haven't seen answered yet. We're talking about going to these rather small plastic dumpsters. That's fine for some families. Other families are going to need the big ones, which are more costly. The last lady just made the comment, as I was going to make, that there would be 18 stops on 15th Street in one block versus 12 with the big containers we have in the alley. Time-wise, I don't know, but as a former truck driver, if that truck on the street's going to stop 18 times, he is definitely going to burn a lot of fuel. It's a lot harder on equipment, stopping and going, stopping and going. The council's going to spend somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 for one of these trucks. That's just one, and you're going to get two, plus the dumpsters. That's a lot of money. You're going to have to train your mechanics, because these trucks are going to be very electronically oriented. If they can't fix them, engine-wise, transmission, things like that, you guys have got to send them out. You can pay your employees 25 bucks an hour, or you can pay Cummins down, down here, $150 an hour to work on something. And like I said, if the mechanics aren't trained, it's going to be very costly to train them. So my biggest concern is the cost outlight that you're spending for equipment. I realize the equipment that you have now is old. I understand that. Things wear out. New stuff's going to wear out too. And has anybody figured where you're going to break even, where these trucks are going to pay for themselves over their lifespan? It's like, if you own one of these things, you know, you, you make payments for X amount of years in maintenance, it's going to take... It's going to take a certain amount of time for these to come around to where they're paid for and they're making, I won't say a profit, but you're breaking even with them. So give it some thought. I, I like my dumpster in the back. My neighbors like it. We keep the alley clean. We keep it very clean in the wintertime. Like the one lady said, the streets don't get cleaned. They really don't. And one other thing, my gentleman that picked up the dumpster the other day, he told me that the rollouts would be picked up in the alleys. Now, I don't know how true that is, but that's what he told me. So thank you gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time on this or any other issue? Okay. Thank you very much for your input this evening. You've given us a lot to think about and I think many of us have been thinking about this. We've been, I can't speak for the rest of the council, they can speak for themselves, but I certainly have been getting my ear full and my mailbox full of people that are not happy with the decision that's been made. And I would enjoy the opportunity to revisit that if the council feels comfortable with it. But at any rate, Mr. Weaver, do you want to try to answer any of the questions that?
Your Honor, I'll take a stab at it and I think we have a couple of staff members. We got people that are actually out in the field doing it and Dawn. I wrote down a few of these. Why the change now? Well, the change now is because the Fremont County Solid Waste District told us they're moving from seven days a week to five days a week.
But they did not require us to, to do away with the dumpsters. This is our solution to the problem they've given us.
That's right. And so that's the change now. We have to change, we have to do something different than the way we're doing it. Because they're only going to be open Tuesday through Saturday. They're not going to be open Monday through Friday like we, or they were open seven days a week. And so that's the difference. So can it be postponed? It's actually going to affect July 1st, so we don't have a lot of time. That's why in a lot of cases, we didn't have a lot of time to research this as much as we wanted to. There was a private enterprise thing that came up. We, I personally have looked into trying to look if we could privatize this. And there's a bunch of, of questions related to that, that it wouldn't work the way we have it set up now. The first one is, is the price. If you compare our rates to Lander, which has a private enterprise, they're actually higher than what we are paying now. And all they do is pick up trash. They do not pick up green waste and they do not pick up recyclables. So if we privatize that, we would have to come up with another solution for the recyclables and the green waste, which would cost money. Because right now, we don't charge for those services. Those are just tacked on to your current rate.
The suggestion was made, the possibility of raising the rates on what we currently have. How much would we have to raise the rates in order to cover the potential increase or is it not a money thing?
Well, this whole thing is not really a money thing. Everyone says that we're doing it to tighten our budget. This is really not. The, the solution that the staff has presented was really an efficiency thing. Because if we can pick up all of the rollouts in the city of Riverton in four day a week, in four days instead of five days, then we become more efficient and on the, the one day that we save, then those guys can go out and work on the streets and be more productive. So really, it's an efficiency for us, not necessarily a cost savings. Because we still have the same amount of equipment and those type of things available. Let's see, what else we had? The other one was, yeah, that we were going to drop employees based on that. That, that's, that's not a true statement. The proposal from the staff was that they were asking for two new streets and alleys people to be added to the city budget. With the proposal staff is presenting, instead of getting those two new street proposals, they would be, we wouldn't have to hire them because we'd have that extra day on Mondays to use them in the streets and alleys. And that's, that's the savings that we have. The alley question, that, that is one that we have considered. So that is not off the table in the fact of if there are certain neighborhoods that it doesn't work for people to go on the front, we can pick up in the alleys, that we have not ruled that completely out. There are some where you have driveways or garages that face the street. Those seem like logically where you could roll those out to the front. That makes it the most efficient. But the ones where they have the garages in the back, then those, but those whole neighborhoods would have to go in the alley to make us the most efficient possible. The, the question about the, the timing, I guess I'll refer that to, you want to do that to Dawn or Greg? In ways of the efficiency, because a lot of questions came up of, I can't believe you could pick up 16 rollouts faster than you could do four dumpsters.
Your Honor, currently we have two new sanitation trucks that we've purchased within the last three years. Those two sanitation trucks, the power that they have to compact the, the garbage in the, in the truck is greater than the older equipment we have. They can only handle the rollouts. At this time, it takes the driver, he can pick up 100 rollouts in an hour. For the older trucks, because of the, the technology, the older, the trucks, the power it takes to lift those heavier loads, they really can only average around 35 to 36 containers an hour. Plus, because they cannot hold as much garbage, they'd have to take two to three trips to the baler a day. Where the newer trucks with the rollouts, he never really has a full load and he only has to dump at the end of the day. So that's where the time savings come is not necessarily having to go down to the baler two or three times and the fact that they can pick up more rollouts in a faster amount of time. And the other thing is, is the older rollout, the older trucks, they have a manual compacting cycle where the driver has to manually start that cycle. While it's compacting, they cannot dump a dump, a container because it goes behind the blade and they, it can't do it. The newer truck, the newer trucks, they can, it's an automatic compaction cycle. So as soon as he dumps, he's got one set for, after the third container, it automatically starts to compact. The other one, I think he has set at a five, after the fifth container, it automatically starts to compact. It is also built that he can still continue to dump his containers as it's compacting.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, just one other thing related to the elderly, because that seems to be a common concern too. We have, we have two sets of rollouts. We have a 90 gallon and we have a 45 gallon. Not a lot of people have used the 45 gallon in the city. Most of them have the bigger 90 gallon that has the big opening. Now, if you look right back over there in there, there's a 45 gallon. Now, this is half the size of a 90 gallon. And I guess my solution to the elderly is that's a much manageable rollout to get either to the alley or to the front than those 90 gallon. They have wheels on them. And I have lived in both situations where I've had a dumpster alley and now I have rollouts. My personal preference is rollouts, only in the fact of when, when I lived over on Adams Street, if, if I wanted to go to the dumpster, I had to walk out the back door, walk all the way to the back, go out the gate, walk down the alley, open up the dumpster with one hand and heave up another one with the other. Now, if you can do that presently, I think you could probably hold, roll out that 45 gallon rollout. I think it's, and, and what we need to look out related to this is our 45 gallon, the only way you get a discounted rate in it is if, if you recycle. So with a 90 gallon, with a 90 gallon, right now, you pay $32.27 for a 90 gallon container. If you recycle, it's $26.72. Now, with a 45 gallon and you recycle, it's $23.81. The dumpster alley people are currently paying $33.86. That would be a savings of $10 a month to the elderly that wanted to use the 45 gallon rollouts. That would be a significant savings to everyone. Because the complaints that we've got in the past is, here you got this big dumpster that's shared by four people and they haul out one or two bags and they're paying $33. This way, they could use a 45 gallon and probably wouldn't even fill up that. And so there, there are some different options for that. So I have any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
The one other thing that was brought to my attention, people were asking about the yard waste containers. Would you speak to that matter?
Yeah, Your Honor, this has no relation to the yard waste. This is only for residential pickup for either residential duplexes, not multifamily. So multifamily are still going to have dumpsters. It's only for residential or duplexes. The green waste containers will stay. The blue bins out in the alleys, those will stay. You won't be converted over to a rollout for that.
Thank you. Your Honor? Yes, Councilman Gard.
You know, the, the way to start this discussion is simply that we don't have control and we need to, we need to get back in control of the, the waste line. The tipping fees are, since I've been on the council, have gone through the roof. That's all mandated to us. That isn't anything that we can control. It's costing us a whole lot of money. The real answer is to tell the DEQ and EPA that we're not going to do what they want us to do. But we don't have enough people in the room to do that. And so here we are with, with this problem. Everyone that has spoken tonight, and I think is correct, if we can leave the dumpsters in the alley, I would suggest that we make a motion, I would first make a motion to, to re, put it up on the table, Your Honor. And then I would like to make the motion that we leave the containers in the alley in every possible setting that we can do. I think everybody that's commented tonight asked if they could stay in the alley and I don't see a reason why they couldn't stay in the alley. We are at a situation where we just have four days to pick up the trash and get it in the dump. There, there's even a rule, if you can believe it, that we can't leave trash on the floor of the baler station, which is just absolutely ridiculous in my mind's eye. And so if we can't get some of these rules changed and we're unwilling to try to attempt to change the rules, we have to live within those rules. And so the solid waste board is mandated. They're nice guys. You can go to their meetings. They scratch their heads, same problems that we're talking about right here. They don't have any leeway to do anything different. And so I think some really good suggestions, Lander does have a waste management privatized group. I've owned businesses in Lander and, and Riverton and, and I, I don't know that I can speak to, Lander costs more. It wouldn't surprise me that that's the case, but the other thing that puts the gun to our head is that we have to do this in a timely manner. And it would have been really smart to have a study done on what it would cost to have the waste picked up by a private industry. And we probably ought to do that. We ought to, we ought to consider that and we ought to ask waste management to give us a proposal. To speak to the other part of that is we've already spent the money for the trucks and they are extremely costly. And they, I believe they're 230. Is that, is that the range they're in Dawn?
Your Honor, I think they were over 300,000.
And so we do have the technology in the city already. We own the trucks. We don't have to go out and buy them. We do have an oversupply of the 45 pound dumpsters. And I've had my dumpster for over four years and they haven't broken yet. And, and yes, you do have to take it out to the curb and you do have to bring it back in tonight. And yet there's, there's only my garbage in it. I can't say that about my dumpster downtown. It's full of anybody's garbage that needs to unload. And so we had four dumpsters, no, we had three dumpsters at that site and we finally cut it back to one and, and that seemed to help. But the open dumpsters, wherever they're at, get used by almost anybody that chooses to use it. So I, I do understand the dilemma. I would like to make the motion that we bring it back up on the table and, and vote on the fact that we put the dumpsters in the alley wherever possible.
Your Honor? Your Honor, could I clarify really quick? Are you, are you saying to put the rollouts in the alley? But, so the pickup would be in the alley, but it would be rollouts, not dumpsters?
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider and a second. Is there further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I just want to make sure we don't make the same mistake. I mean, we're, could we take a little time to kind of consider a lot of things instead of making another decision that we, I don't know, it was when we voted on it, that was the first I heard of it. So I'd like to take a little time to see what other places are doing, how it might work, maybe do some employee stuff. Because they're still doing it five days. I, I don't know. I move employees around all the time. I don't know if that's a solution. I'm, just some other options is what I would prefer so we don't have another room of people that maybe it's not working for.
Your Honor, I guess.
And I do know time is of the essence.
Yeah, July 1st, they're putting their operations to, to five days a week. And so at that point, we, we have to make a change.
The question that I would have, and I'm, organizationally, I'm not real clear on this, but you're talking about picking up the garbage in four days and it's important that we be able to do that. What would happen if you only picked up three fourths of the garbage in four days? And the, the fourth of the garbage that we weren't able to pick up that week then would cycle to the next. So it would constantly be, you would be expanding that time. It would solve the problem of having to cover the garbage up and not being allowed. You'd just leave the garbage to sit in the garbage can for a couple, three more days, which I don't think is going to hurt most people. And I don't know how it would, how it would affect the whole process. It would, do you see what I'm saying? It would recycle it through rather than a four day, say, make it on a six day cycle.
Your Honor?
Yes.
By the third week, you'd be 200% behind.
200% behind?
Yeah, quarter, a quarter, a quarter and a quarter. You'd be behind. You wouldn't catch up. You can't. Because you're always leaving a quarter behind. And, and we can't leave it, we could dump it. We can pick up five days a week. But the problem is, or six days a week, but the problem is, we can't get rid of it.
No, I understand that.
And we can't leave it on the floor down there of our own property, which is guarded by our own people.
I, I just look at my garbage and I have one of the dumpsters and whatnot that, that many times that you go out there, it's a quarter full. You know, I mean, it's, it's not being used and it wouldn't hurt it to, to rest for another couple of days.
You're saying only pick up the ones that are full?
Well, not necessarily. No, I don't think you could do that, but I don't, I don't know how you would, how you would judge that. But it, it just seems to me like this is something that is so important to our community that it's worth us following up on Councilman Christensen's advice, that we don't continue on a road that we've gone down, that I personally, and I make no bones about it, I've, since we started this discussion, I recall having the discussion with Mr. Urbikite when we purchased the two new trucks, that he made the comment that only, they could only pick up rollouts. And I said, so that was the first step in moving to where we are now. Okay, and that was several years ago when that was, when that was done. And so at any rate.
Is the problem the dumpsters or is the problem picking up the trash in the alleyway? I don't think there's a problem.
Well, it's the configuration of the truck.
Well, it's the configuration of the truck that you have can only, one of them can only pick up the rollouts, and the other one picks up the three-yard dumpsters, is my understanding.
That's right.
Is that not correct? Okay. So...
Your Honor?
Mr. Martinez?
I know my order. Lee Martinez. But I have one question. Have you considered working from Tuesday through Saturday and doing the pickups? I give Monday and Tuesday off. That's the only question I have.
Well, it's those kinds of suggestions that I'm suggesting that we try to work around rather than going with the feeling that the Solid Waste District is forcing us to make this move. They're not forcing us to make this move. This is our solution to the problem that they've given us. And I think there's a lot of other solutions to the problem.
That would be one way to solve it. You still have five days to pick up.
Yes.
Well, Your Honor, we did look at the five days. The issue with the five days is, for sanitation workers, it would work, because they would work their five days. But we have supervisors, we've got mechanics, other people related to that operations that have to be here for the other part of the city. And so you'd have overtime, or you'd have, it would be a, it'd be a little complicated. I mean, it's, I think it's something you could probably work out, but I think in the end it would cost you more money.
Your Honor?
But, but I wanted to clarify that I talked to Dawn, and she said that the Solid Waste District is willing to work with us for six months from that July 1st.
Okay.
So your intention to look at it further is viable.
Okay, great. Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I just wanted to say, I do like Lee's suggestion. In regards to the supervisor and all that, I do understand that. But I've been a nurse for many, many years. On-call is a big deal. In my profession, on-call is easy. You might have to pay him two or three dollars an hour, but on Saturday to have a supervisor or mechanic on-call, but it's a suggestion, because hospitals do it, a lot of professions do that, have that supervisor mechanic, or whatever needed person can be on-call. But I do like the five days a week, because we're still doing it five days a week, or we can do it five days a week, so.
I just feel that the expressions that have been expressed here this evening are, you know, indicative of a serious problem that we're trying to address. And I, what concerns me the most, I think, about it is that the, the part of our community that has most of the alleys are the older parts of town. And the newer developments, when they develop them, they develop them without alleys in order to save on land, so they can crowd more houses into them for more sales, I think, for developers. But in the older sections of town where people have grown up and have lived for the last forty, fifty, sixty years, you know, it's evolved into this, I guess, relationship with our dumpster. And in order to change it for our older citizens, and every day I'm getting older and older myself, I'm seventy-two years old, and so I'm not enthusiastic about wrestling a rollout in the wintertime. The forty-five gallon rollout as well, I think, would be a lighter dumpster, and so it would be more susceptible, I think, to being blown down the street when we get one of our windstorms. And I just, we occasionally have problems with animals getting into garbage and tearing it up and spreading it all over town. And I think anything that we can do to, to, to keep our community clean of garbage, we should do. And we have a pretty working system, I think, right now with the dumpsters that we have in the alley. And I just hate to see us be pushed into something that, that we would not be happy with, so. Yes, certainly.
I don't think I forgot to introduce myself previously. I'm Betty Malicki. I live at 406 North Fourteenth. I've resided there since nineteen sixty-one. In regard to privatizing the sanitation department, you know, private enterprise, we have a problem in Fremont County in procuring land for a future dump site. Private enterprise often has the money. If they can go out and pay the price, they'll be able to get it. So that might be another consideration. And I agree with Mr. Weaver, the price may be higher with privatizing it. I don't know. That's something we'd, you'd have to look into, because I don't know the prices.
Thank you. Yes, Ray.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I'm just, I live out of town, so...
Can you identify yourself for the record?
I'm Ray Apadaka. And I live out of town, but just listening to this, I'm kind of curious. What you're trying to do is, is put, instead of working a five-day week because of the opening of where you dumped the garbage, you're trying to get, you're going to only pick up garbage for four days?
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
So you're, you're going to a four-day pickup, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm wondering is, couldn't you pick up another day by having longer days? Or four, if they're based on eight-hour days? What if you went ten-hour days, and then you'd pick up another day, and you'd get it all picked up in the four? I was just kind of listening to what...
Hours of operation at the landfill are eight to five. And so, once again, we run in these issues of we have to have a dump by a certain time.
Point of order, Your Honor?
Yes.
I think you have a motion and a second.
That's correct.
Place. And so we either got to take that back and move to a table. Problem with the table is it only gives us another week. They're going to work with us for six months, possibly. So there's no need to rush headlong into this. I'll retract my motion if the second will allow me. And we ought to, we ought to study this out and see if we can't assist. You know, I think all of us would really like to have a large metal dumpster somewhere that we can use. The reality of it is, that isn't the case. And so the city gets accused constantly of never moving forward and never progressing. And here we are with a progressive moment given to us, choosing not to take it. And so we have the technology, we have the equipment, we have the manpower. We ought to study it out and come up with a good solution instead of, instead of just taking it from, from what's handed to us. And truly, you know, people, we need to push back on, on the federal government. This, this stuff is just costing us a lot of money. And we only show up when it's our dumpster. And what we really need to do is get busy and push back on the federal government when it's the whole city's dumpster. We didn't have this many people show up when they changed the tipping fees, and they went up, I believe, almost eighty percent. Dawn, help me again. Did they, did they move that far, the tipping fees?
Well, actually, they went, Your Honor, they actually were not charging tipping fees, and when they implemented tipping fees, it went to eighty dollars a ton.
Thank you. And we've been referred to in the, in the Waste Department as the cash cow of Fremont County. And we're paying for the ride. And so we really do need to understand that and get our arms around it and do whatever we can, get more people on the Solid Waste Board, whatever we can do to get some common sense back into trash, for heaven's sakes. It's, it's trash, and we generate a lot of it, and we need to take care of it. I would make, if the, if the second withdraws, I would make the motion to table. If you don't want a table, do you want to just postpone?
Your Honor?
I would suggest that, inasmuch as the, the original motion that we made at the last meeting was just to give direction to the senior staff, is that not correct?
No, the motion, the motion was to go to the rollouts.
Okay, so there, there is a firm motion. Okay. So, so if we don't reconsider that motion, then that motion stands. So I think we need to move forward with, with reconsideration, perhaps under a different, different
But you need to withdraw.
So we'll withdraw this motion, but I think we need to make a second motion.
And we need to vote to reconsider. We need to have a motion to reconsider our previous. Your Honor, I'd make the motion to reconsider.
And I'll second the motion to reconsider.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mayor votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, so now we can have a new motion to go the direction that we want to go. Is that not correct?
Your Honor, you simply vote, retake the vote. So if you want to vote it down, then you'd, because you're taking the vote of what happened last week.
So we can vote down the way we voted last week. And then you will have no direction, which will mean you'll come back to the council for direction, right?
That's right.
Okay. Sorry. So, you're going to take that vote.
Your Honor, and do we have a motion and a second to do that?
It's last week's motion.
Do we need a motion?
No.
No. We just
Okay, all, would you explain that to the council, Courtney, of where we're at, so? Correct.
I was to reconsider that vote, seconded, and it was unanimous. Now you just need to vote differently.
Okay, so the same motion is on the table, and we just vote it down?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then you will have no direction?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Need to restate.
Does everyone understand?
That was
Do we need to restate the motion, so we know which way we're voting up or down?
You could certainly restate the motion from last, from May twentieth.
If you would like. Would you restate the motion? Do you have that there, Courtney?
Your Honor, it's in the minutes of May twentieth. I believe the motion from the minutes that will be passed. After discussion from council and staff, Councilmember Smith moves, seconded by Councilmember Fabian, to go to a four-day-a-week sanitation operation schedule. Motion passed unanimously.
So we're voting to go to a four-day-a-week sanitation schedule. If you vote no, you're voting not to go to that schedule.
Roll call.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor at this time to reconsider that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And mayor votes no, that motion is defeated. Okay, so now we're moving forward with a Clean Bill Health, right? All right. Is that clear to everyone, where we're at? If you're not confused, you don't understand the problem, I guess.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
Could we though, so we don't waste time, can we not get some directive to the, to get us the information that we need to make a correct decision in a timely manner? First of all, that what would the cost be, or a general idea if we can privatize, and why we don't want to do that? I realize why we don't want to do that. We have all this equipment purchased. And, and then the other question is, can we, we need to look at the ten-day, ten-hour day in four days, what that does to us? And we need to look at alley over front streets. Are we, do we have left and right problems of, can the dumpster pick up just to the, just to the right? And so to do an alley, you'd have to go both directions, or we'd have to request that all of the dumpsters come to one side, to the right side of the alley, correct?
I think that's correct.
And I think we could do that. What are the other problems that you see?
Just looking at the five-day-a-week.
Yeah. And, and we got to have the, we got to have the difference, we got to have information back on the four-day, ten-hour, ten hours a day, and what it costs us to go to five days, one of those being an overtime day, I would suppose, unless you move your personnel, so.
I would think after this discussion, the staff has a pretty good direction of what we're looking for. So...
And, and I'd like to add to that, Your Honor, most everybody, I don't think we have to go too far. They don't want them out of the alley. And everybody that spoke wants them in the alley. So the feasibility, we might get a, we might get some information of how many would have to come forward
That's right.
onto the street, and how many we could hold in the alley, so we can, and there again, we get into the same problem of an exception of the rule. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Gard. Your Honor? Any other comments?
What is the, what is the population of the rollers and dumpsters? What, what do we have, seventy-five, twenty-five? What is the number of rollouts that are available that we currently have now versus the alleys?
Your Honor, I, that number, we, based on our system that we have currently, it showed about seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent currently is, is being dumped off of the road.
Rollouts.
Okay, rollouts.
And twenty-five percent on the, on the dumpsters.
It was like eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven households, or something like that?
Eight-thirty-seven.
But as a part of this process, we're going to verify that, because, you know, that's, that's something that's been in place since we got our software in seven years ago. And so it'd be a good thing to go through that, too, and make sure that we have the correct numbers, or the people are being billed correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We appreciate your time and consideration on this and everything by the staff. I know they've worked on it for a long time, and so. Okay. Agenda item number seven is consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda by, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, council work session. Approval of the minutes, June second, two thousand fourteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for June second, two thousand fourteen. And the city clerk's office received a catering permit application from Barton for July eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, for a street dance in front of the Barton from four o'clock PM to one AM.
Your Honor?
Yes.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee to approve claims to be paid in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Manual checks written in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for May sixteenth, twenty fourteen, and May twenty-second, twenty fourteen, in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty-three cents, for a total of six-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to accept the consent.
Second.
Then moved in second. It is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Agenda item number eight is public hearing and consideration of restaurant liquor license transfer of ownership from Fred and Yuko Parrot to Parrot's Incorporated, doing business as Parrot's Pizza, Pasta, and Calzones. City clerks report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to state statutes, as well as the Riverton Municipal Code, anytime there's a change in the ownership of a restaurant liquor license, it must come before the governing body again. We received the application. It was filled out appropriately. The fee has been paid. The advertisement requirements have been made, and the application has been certified as complete by the liquor division.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding this public hearing?
Your Honor, I would move to open public hearing regarding the transfer of restaurant liquor license at this time.
Second. It's been moved in second to go into a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance to state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this public hearing?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'd make a motion to close public hearing. Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I now declare the public hearing being closed. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the transfer of liquor license?
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to accept the transfer of the liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the liquor license transfer as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mayor votes aye. That motion passes. Agenda item number nine, approval of the Wind River Visitors Council budget plan and reappointment of Sarah Kalback. City administrators report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The city of Riverton has a joint powers agreement with all the cities and counties. and counties in Fremont County. According to this agreement, each member of the joint powers board are required to approve the annual Wind River Visitors Council budget plan. Uh, we currently have two representatives that serve on that council, and that's Jim Davis from the Chamber and Sarah Kalback. The four percent lodging tax revenues as presented in that plan will generate six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. In, in addition to this, adopting the plan, we wanted to, uh, approve the reappointment of Sarah Kalback to the board. We received notice that her board term was expiring, the city advertised the position in the paper, we didn't get any applicants, Sarah was the only one that reapplied, and we recommend that she be, um, reappointed to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the Wind River Visitors Council budget and reappointment of Sarah Kalback?
Your honor, I would move to approve the Wind River Visitors Council budget, and to reappoint Sarah Kalback to her position on that board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, it is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number ten, Apodaca first edition plat, community development directors' report, please.
Yes, your honor, the Apodaca first edition plat will be an addition to the city of Riverton. It's located south of Webbwood Road on the east side of North Broadway Avenue. With this plat, the petitioners wish to create five lots that will be annexed into the city of Riverton. The property will be zoned for residential use after the plat is recorded. There is an existing twenty-foot-wide Riverton Valley irrigation easement on the east side of these lots, and along the south of Lot Five. A twenty-foot-wide irrigation and utility and drainage easement has been created along the westerly side of these lots to allow for sewer and water. A fifteen-foot irrigation, utility and drainage easement has been created between Lot Three and Four. We did send out review sheets, and we did not receive any conflicts from the utility companies. On May 22nd, the planning commission recommended this plat for approval with the stipulation that a subdivision agreement be written that addresses the potential for future access on the northeast corner of this plat. And I gave you some larger plats, so you could see on that north, um, let's see, northeast corner of that top lot. This, the stipulation was, for the subdivision agreement would be written that addresses that potential, uh, and would only be needed in the event that development of the property to the east requires an additional access road. Mr. Apodaca has agreed to an access easement on the northeast corner of Lot One, and in a subdivision agreement, he would agree to an additional easement on his property to the north, in the event that a developer required additional access, and would compensate Mr. Apodaca for this easement. In order to obtain the entire easement needed for this road, the city of Riverton and another property owner to the north would have to agree to the easement for this road in the future. The city property contains a non-working well and a wellhouse, but could potentially be used for access if required by future development of the fusil property, with the road improvements to be completed by that developer. It is our recommendation that city council approve the plat of Apodaca first edition in addition to the city of Riverton.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding Apodaca first edition plat?
Your honor, I would...
I'd make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve this, um, first edition plat, is there discussion?
Your honor, we need to have a public hearing. Not on this one?
The next one.
Oh, the next one, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better, Stephen, I get confused on those two. It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Agenda item number eleven, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number fourteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Apodaca first edition zoning designation, community development directors' report.
Yes, your honor. This area was just approved as an addition to the city of Riverton by the council a few minutes ago, it is a minor subdivision, and it's located in Fremont County. This plat created five lots, which are located to the east of North Broadway and south of Webbwood. And lots one through five are being annexed into the city of Riverton, and now they require zoning. The petitioners are requesting that this property be zoned residential. The master plan shows this area as county residential, therefore residential B. District is appropriate zoning for this parcel. The planning commission conducted a public hearing for this zoning procedure on May 22nd, and they recommended approval as presented. A sign was posted on the property, one comment was received, just asking questions regarding which properties were being annexed into the city. They had no problem with it, once they learned which properties were being annexed. This, uh, annexation will take three readings, this would be for first reading, and, um, then we are hoping to have second reading next week, and then third reading, and get through the readings, uh, this month, so the developer could, uh, continue with his property. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Luris. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing?
Your honor, I would move to open public hearing at this time.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to open a public hearing, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing is open, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this issue?
Seeing none, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to close the public hearing, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we will now have, uh, the, uh, motion regarding the, um, where I was? Public, or the, um, uh, ordinance number fourteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Apodaca first edition zoning designation.
Your honor, would you like me to read that ordinance?
Yes, if you would, please.
This is proposed ordinance number fourteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, first reading, and ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the zone of lots one, two, three, four, five, Apodaca first edition, in addition to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, to be B residential district.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding this issue?
Your honor, I would move to approve ordinance number fourteen-dash-zero-zero-seven on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Apodaca, you're ready to go. Or we're getting closer, anyway. Uh, agenda item number twelve, the force committee recommendation to purchase of a durapatcher. The chair would entertain a motion to remove the force committee recommendation to purchase a durapatcher from the table.
Your honor, I'd make the motion to remove the durapatcher from the tabled item.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to, uh, remove the durapatch issue from the table, uh, is there discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
Sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The, uh, issue of the purchase of the durapatch is, uh, before us at this time. Okay.
Your honor, is, is there a motion, was there a motion made then, last week?
Yes, and we have, uh, public services director's report, I think, wants to fill us in on that again.
Yes, your honor, um, the force committee met on, um, April 14th, and looked at the durapatcher, and, and they felt that it filled the potholes in the streets, um, nicely, and they recommended, on their May 12th meeting, that the city purchase a new durapatcher for the two, and to be, for the amount of sixty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This included a savings of eight thousand dollars from past rent on the equipment. The vote was five, four, and one against, three members were absent. Currently, the one percent fund is estimated at one million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. After subtracting the current commitments, there's a balance of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. On June 3rd, this morning, or this afternoon, we opened bids for the major patching projects. The bids, um, the bid, the apparent low bidder on that came in at three-hundred-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars, which is slightly above what we do have, um, left in the one percent fund. And currently, the city is receiving a, practically on average, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand per month in revenue.
Okay, thank you. We had a, a good discussion, uh, on this particular item at our last meeting, and that was the reason that it was tabled, uh, that we wanted to think about it a little bit more, and, uh, see which way we wanted to go. I guess at this time, uh, the chair would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the purchase of this durapatch equipment in order to be able to have the discussion, so if there is such a motion, then we can decide if we want to vote it up or down.
Your honor, I would, I would move to deny the force committee's recommendation of purchasing a durapatcher at this time, I don't think it's a good idea.
Do we need a motion, mayor?
I'm not sure that a negative motion is acceptable, is it?
Oh, you have to do a positive motion? Oh, alright, well then, I don't want to make that motion.
Your honor?
Certainly.
I'd make the motion so that we could discuss it, to, for the purchase of the durapatcher.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, is there discussion? Councilman Fabian?
I still think it's a bad idea.
Sure. That's good discussion.
I guess, unless I'm mistaken, the reason it was tabled was that the force committee wanted it tabled, because they hadn't come up with a recommendation yet, as to whether they wanted to purchase
Yes.
new or used, and there were a lot of questions raised about how much we were going to use it, if we bought it, was it, uh, going to be used for two months out of the year, and then leased out to the neighboring communities, so I guess unless we have those, those answers back...
Yes.
I'm, again, I think we're right back in the same situation, that we don't, we don't have anything answered, we probably ought to either just
Do we have...
Table it again.
Does the force committee have a recommendation at this time? Do we have an answer?
Your honor, no, they don't, we haven't met yet.
Okay. Okay.
So, to get rid of that, don't we just, can't we just vote down? It's, and it goes away, and then they can bring us back the motion?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I, I guess what concerns me, and I expressed it last time, that I just, when we, when we met with the county commissioners, um, and Commissioner Becker, uh, expressed concern about our considering purchasing this equipment, uh, his feeling and his commentary was that if we went ahead and purchased this equipment with one percent money for the city of Riverton, then he would have a hard time defending, uh, the, uh, asking by his, uh, department to purchase a road grader, that apparently they need. And so, it's, it's, it's this concern that we all have, that once you start down that road using one percent money for things that were not on the ballot initiative, then we run into these kinds of problems, and, and none of us disagree that this is a good idea, you know, if we weren't using one percent monies, um, but, um, unless we can come up with, um, some way to purchase this equipment without using one percent money, I certainly couldn't, uh, couldn't support it, so.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard?
When the information comes back, I would like to have the information of what the lease costs, and how many months we would deem that we'd have it in service in the city of Riverton. One month, two months, all year long? There's a breakover point there, where if we use it too much, we might as well own it. Don, to understand you, to say that the purchase had eight thousand dollars taken off the sixty-four already?
Yes, your honor.
And so, how many months have we had that piece of equipment?
Your honor, we currently, we use the rental equipment for four months.
For four months? So if we could get that information, we could make an educated decision on whether it's a good idea to lease it or own it. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is it my understanding that the rent on that is two thousand a month?
Your honor, four thousand.
Four thousand a month.
We're only going to get half of the purchase, half the lease money back.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor at this time to purchase the durapatch. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, same sign?
No.
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 And mayor votes no, that motion is defeated. Okay. I guess that's all the substantive things that we have on the agenda at this time. Reports and comments, council committee reports, and council members' roundtable. Uh, Councilman Larson, would you go first, please?
Uh, yes, your honor, uh, I met with, um, people on Main Street, and they certainly appreciate the location of the current market, being in the vacant lot that the city owns on Main Street. It appears that it's, the location there is that the lot was designed for that market, and they appreciate it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian?
Thank you, your honor, um, the Parks Master Plan, Master Plan Committee is meeting, uh, on the fifth, and will be actually drafting, hopefully beginning drafting of a few sections of our, um, parks plan to bring back to the city. We elected to, um, look at the Parks Plan from the city of Casper, and are kind of using that as a template to make sure we get the right sections in there, and obviously, our Parks Plan will be very different from theirs, but it's a good template to work from, and, uh, we're planning to meet at, uh, five fifteen PM at the meeting room at School District Twenty-Five Central Office. If any members of the public would like to attend, please feel free, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Your honor, I have no committees to report.
Okay. Councilman Canaan?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Councilman Gard?
Uh, the airport, uh, force committee meets Thursday at two o'clock, in two-to-four in Pavilion, at the rec center. Our last meeting, we had, uh, individuals come down from the Cody Airport, and informed us of some things that they've been doing, and was quite helpful. The other problem that we still have lying ahead of us is reconstruction at the airport, and that is going ahead, and, and, uh, we're going to have to spend that money, and that, I believe it's a fifteen-million-dollar project, and the city's portion is somewhere around four-hundred thousand. And so, we're going to, we're going to go ahead with that, because we're, we're in the queue, and there's no way out, so, um, the other information on the, the force committee is that they're, they're still probing all possibilities. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. City administrators report?
Yes, your honor.
An introduction of our guest?
Yeah, I was going to recognize, we have someone in our audience with us, he's a, he's our public works candidate, Kyle Butterfield, he's from Cottonwood Heights, Utah, and he's had a busy day today with a lot of interviews through a community panel, and employee panel, and a one-on-one with myself, and he'll have a tour tomorrow morning, and then be completed, and then we'll make a decision. In relation to next week, we will, it's kind of a special meeting, um, work session, so the first part will be the special meeting, we'll adopt the budget, and I think we're going to do the Apodaca second reading on that, and then we'll go into a work session where we'll have Mylan from the airport's going to come down. to come down and teach us about airport operations of what happens up there, and I think that should be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butterfield, would you care to address the council? Any comments or anything? We televise the council chambers, and so everyone in the audience at home, I'm sure would be interested in getting a feel for yourself, if you'd like to.
Mayor, council, executive staff, I'm appreciative for this opportunity to express my gratitude for the opportunity to come up, get to know the city of Riverton, get to know your good staff, get to know the projects you have planned, get a feel of the direction you're going. And all I can say are positive things. I commend each one of you for the direction you're taking this city. In the due diligence that I did in getting to know your community, I can say I was very impressed, and that's what, that's what really brought me to want to come here and join your team. I think I've said this multiple times today, but I know I have big shoes to fill, and I look forward to accepting that challenge, and I'm humbled to do so. So I appreciate this opportunity. I guess I'll give you a little get-to-know-you, and I'll be quick, and I'll be brief, but I am from Utah. Currently, I reside in the city of Cottonwood Heights and have worked there for the last four years. Prior to that, I was with the city of West Valley, so I have nine years of progressive experience in the public works realm, and have enjoyed each one of those years. I feel like I've learned a lot, and I've been able to participate in many projects that have benefited the community and also things that I've learned from over the years. I was able to do an education at the University of Utah, complete a Master of Public Administration. Those are things that I hope to bring to this city. I hope that my educational background, my professional background, can only supplement what you already have going on here and the successes that you're having. I feel like I'm a normal guy. I enjoy fishing. I enjoy the outdoors. Love to ski. Love to go on the boat whenever I can. So I appreciate this opportunity to formally greet one of you, and thank you for this opportunity to meet with you and be with your great city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Okay, under Mayor's comments, I'm surprised that Mr. Weaver didn't comment about our trip to Laramie. If you would like to go back, you'd do a better job than I on that, Stephen. I think the community would be.
How long of a version do you want? Yeah, the mayor and I and a couple IDA members and Senator Beebout and Senator, or not Senator, Representative Miller had an opportunity to fly on Senator Beebout's private jet from Riverton to Laramie, and that was probably the most exciting part of the whole thing because we stepped off of the, of our car, stepped into the plane, and we're out in the air in a couple minutes and landed in Laramie 43 minutes later and got off and walked right into the car. So I mean, compared to commercial air service, that's a dream come true. But we had a great meeting in front of the Business Council there in Laramie. We had a lot of support. Both our representative and senator stood up in support of our application to try to get the honor-farmed property into private hands. And it was a tough go in the fact that staff at the time was recommending complete denial of the application. As we spoke, Alan Moore is the president of IDA Inc., he was kind of the lead person, and then each of us got up and spoke about a different topic related to it. But by the end of our conversation, a lot of them had changed their mind, and my, a lot of heads were changing and going, wow, I didn't realize this is the extent of the project. But in the end, we realized that we didn't think we had enough votes, and there was a couple of questionable things that brought, were brought up related to getting some recapture agreements set up so that they can get paid back for some of the monies that are spent on that. The other one was that IDA would not bid a dime over what the appraised value was or the beginning bid, because the whole point of the discussion was that we wanted to get this property to auction so that anybody could bid on it. And IDA was going to make the first bid, and then hopefully four or five other developers be in line to stand and put that bid out and sell it and get it developed, and that was our main point. And so the recommendation was to pull it, bring it back in the August meeting. We had to have an actual vote of the Business Council to bring it back in August because normally they don't hear BRC grants in August, but they made the exception, and a lot of them came up afterwards and said, I think when you clear up these things, we're going to have a lot more support for it. And so it's moving forward, and I think we did the right thing, and it was, it was a pretty exciting time.
It was, it was a good trip. Thank you, Stephen. That was a much better job articulating that than I could have. I agree with you 100%. That's exactly what happened, so, good job. The other thing on the mayor's report this evening, I was reading on County 10 News, and we have three citizens that have recently passed away. All of them are in their 90s. Nort Axhelm was 93 years old. Alitha Boyd was 93 years old, and Ortho Kissling was 99 years old. Now, anybody that wants to know what it's taken to build Riverton to the point that we are, go back and read those three obituaries, and that's what it takes to build Riverton. These were three remarkable people, and it's just a great loss to our community. Alitha Boyd, the name didn't ring a bell, but her maiden name was Griffey, and she and her parents settled, and that's where we get the name Griffey Hill up here. So anyway, I thought that was interesting. Good job reporting, Ernie, on that. Good job. So, other than that, I don't have anything else this evening, so it's my understanding we have an executive session to go into. So the Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of real estate, consideration of site selection or purchase of real estate in accordance of Wyoming Statute 16-4-405 AVII.
Your Honor, I would move to enter executive session at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye.
Your Honor, I'd move to reconvene into regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Action item from executive session, the Chair would entertain a motion to authorize purchase of property or?
Shit the wounded.
Your Honor, I would move to purchase property, what was the gentleman's name?
Bruce Hanson.
From Bruce Hanson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the property from Mr. Bruce Hanson for a retention pawn. Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.